Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Winslow Township Board of Education regular meeting on tonight, Wednesday, March 12th. Public notice of this meeting was given to all board members and associates in a notice dated January 9th, 2025. Adequate electronic notice of this public meeting has been provided specifying the time, place, and manner in which this meeting is being conducted. It was advertised in a courier post posted in all schools, the administration office, the municipal building, the library, Bud Dugel Center, Edwood Acres, Allentown, and the Winslow Township post offices. The mission statement. The mission of the Winslow Township School District, a large, diverse, and growing community, is to educate all students to become independent lifelong learners, critical thinkers, and caring and confident members of their community. This district, in partnership with the community and in a climate of cooperation and mutual respect, will provide an academic environment which values excellence and diversity, encourages students to strive for personal excellence, and assists them in acquiring the knowledge, skills, and attitudes necessary to contribute positively to a rapidly changing world. Roll call, please.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Ms. Dredon?
She will be absent tonight.
Ms. Claude?
Present.
Ms. Martin?
Present.
Mr. McManus?
Here.
Ms. Peterson?
Present.
Ms. Pitts?
Ms. Pitts will be absent tonight as well.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Mr. Shaw?
Present.
We have a form.
Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. McManus, we agreed with the district goals?
Yes, sir. Twenty-four, twenty-five district goals. Number one, student achievement, continue to implement best practices for delivering instructions to students. And this shall include, conduct legally administrative walkthroughs to monitor teaching and learning. Two, consistently review student assessment data to guide into redirect teaching. Three, continue to provide supplemental activities, for example tutoring on two, creating positive learning environment for students and staff. Eight, strictly enforce the student code of conduct. B, focus on upper elementary school students to modify student behavior in early grades. C, reinforce positive behavior in a specific and genuine way. D, approach discipline with care, respect, and the desire to see the good in all students. Three, increase parent caregiver and community engagement in education by A, provide opportunities for two-way communication with district stakeholders. B, continue with communication consortium. C, focus on refining our communication method.
Twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Mrs. Boyle and Mrs. Chico will be making that presentation this evening. Ms. Chico?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Gina Chico. I'm the assistant minister. And I'm going to be the first to present the attended the district's presentation for the twenty-five, twenty-six. And that's important on board members in your package. You will have two items. You will have the presentation as posted out there. And you also have the advertised budget with all of that would be advertised after it's been submitted and approved. At the end of the presentation at the or tonight, you need to get that that packet back because it's not supposed to be published and public. Okay. So for state aid. This slide shows the twenty-four, twenty-five state aid versus twenty-five, twenty-six. Twenty-four, twenty-five, you got a total of seventy-three million dollars. That's existing and operating. And state is preschool aid. And twenty-five, twenty-six, we have a total of fifty-nine, twenty-nine million, which also is operating since preschool aid. And our budget, eight, around three point two million dollars. However, preschool aid went down around six hundred and sixty thousand for a total increase of two point five million dollars. Federally, this is semi. If semi is a special education initiative. This is funding from the federal that is calculated by the state. And this number is an estimated calculation. As you can see, there are the decrease of two hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. This, this number is not our generation. Like I said, it's generated by the states. We have no control over the funding. But local contribution. Yeah, this is comparing twenty-four, twenty-five, twelve, twenty-six. The tax levy for twenty-five, twenty-six is two percent over the previous year. Our total of twenty-five, twenty-eight million dollars for an increase of one million ninety-four thousand. Fund balance is a statutory number that we have to budget in this year's amount. And it's six point seven million, which is actually a decrease from the prior year of around two point one million dollars. The withdrawal from capital reserve, fourteen point five million dollars is for our, for our middle school HVAC anticipated project. The twenty-four, twenty-five included the high school, the balance of the high school funding and school five's HVAC projects. And this year, we are withdrawing eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars for our required maintenance for a total for twenty-five, twenty-six of seventy-eight million dollars, an increase of nine hundred and fifty-five thousand. This is all of our funding sources. Local tax levy, state aid, extra regular aid, fund balance. Tuition, this one is semi. The federal capital reserve, the withdrawal for maintenance reserve. The total is a hundred and thirty-nine point two million dollars. I went over the tax levy and the state aid already. The extraordinary aid is money that we apply for at the end of the year for special ed costs. Again, I went over our flat balance. The tuition of three point one million is our tuition revenue from Chiselhurst and some other miscellaneous tuition that we get from other schools. The eighty thousand, six hundred is miscellaneous revenue for interest that we get for any other use facilities or miscellaneous revenue. Semi is thirty-six, seven, and then the middle school is capital reserve, even interest reserve. So like this, student support, our withdrawal from capital reserve, fourteen point five million dollars to the year to generate HVAC system at the middle school. And these are for the original unit, the top of the whole school. So this is all of our budgeted appropriations summarized in a handful of categories. Instruction, tuition, student support, and maintenance. And the operations maintenance, student transportation benefits, interest savings reserve, capital outlay, and transfer of our schools. The instruction of forty-four million includes regular ed, special ed, co-curricular, and athletic funding. The tuition includes tuitions that we pay for all of our other district students to go to private schools, campus, vocational schools, and other elevates. Student transportation. Student, student support of twelve point six million includes categories such as nursing, speech, OTPT, the child study team guidance, and extraordinary services. Administration and information technology of eight million includes the general administration, central administration, business office, and IT. Operation and maintenance includes all of our air mark contracts and any, and any, any cost related to the buildings and other grounds areas. Our student transportation is our cost for our transportation, costs of bus, bus drivers out of district, routes to other schools and other private schools for the disabled. Benefits, that includes all of our benefits for the, for all staff. That includes medical prescription, dental visits, and then other employee, other employee benefits such as waivers, retirement, and insurance. Interest on maintenance reserve is an activated number. Capital outlay, that includes our withdrawal from capital reserve, our withdrawal from, for the middle school projects, additional equipment that we might budget for buses or any other equipment that we might plan on doing throughout the year. And then the transfer to charter schools includes the tuition to our charter schools that we sent for the students. And the total of one hundred and thirty-nine, twenty-two million, which is the standard that we budgeted if we have here. The teacher and I had two little letters hanging next to each number. And if we go to the advertised budget packet in each three, the packet is the number of categories. The amounts. A, everything is part of the categories. B is one number. C is another category of six or seven. Nine categories. B is four categories. And then some of these other categories are just a single amount. And so they're labeled. All right. On the next slide is our current expense budget over the last three years. It shows twenty-three, twenty-four actual, twenty-four, twenty-five revised, and twenty-five, twenty-six proposed. If you, if you look at the chart between twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-five, twenty-six, you have a difference of around three million dollars. The other, the other is the start rate for twenty-three, twenty-four. The other, everything else seems to be, increases or increased. Again, on the other side of the fence is instruction. And as it relates, instruction is actually kind of like maybe which is instruction and tuition. And all the other ones are related to that other budget slide that I did except for capital maintenance, which includes five hundred dollars plus the capital outlay. And as you can see, the revenue is agreed to the expenditures. So for the most budget, twenty-five, twenty-six, that's all. The general has a lot of, twenty-two million in total budget. Eighty-three, twenty-four million in anticipated revenues and fifty-five million on the next slide. The revenue is, is from local, state, and federal. Um, federal. Federal grants, sorry. And that's a complete, five million dollars. And the total is revenue and expenses is the same amount. So for a total of one hundred and forty-seven, seventy-seven million in budget, in total budget, ninety-one point six in anticipated revenue, and again, fifty-five million in total taxes. The ninety-four thousand is a transfer that we do in general fund, that's what the revenue is for our preschool students. And because it's included in revenue, I mean, in general fund, the revenue is, yeah, the profit, the first of the transfer. Ninety-one point eight million of its free revenue, as I said, my key to millions in tax revenue. Like I said, special revenue fund includes local grants, state grants, and federal grants. The local grants are, any, anybody who wants to locally donate to the, to the school districts. State grants are preschool aid and school-based youth. And our federal funding includes the title grants, IDEA grants, and programs. And that includes the presentation. Any questions? Hi, Mr. Anderson?
The federal grants, was that anticipated or receiving based on previous years or is actual?
So we, we budgeted seventy-five percent of the current year grants for, across the board.
So you took a twenty-five percent reduction?
Yeah, except for preschool aid because we were given the totals of how much we're allowed, you know, based on the state carryover and any local that we're going to get from either Chiselhurst or, or General Fund.
So federal grants, twenty-five percent reduction?
Yes.
State grants?
State grants, like I said, preschool is, they give it, gave us all the funding. So that's funded as actual for the twenty-five, twenty-six grade. School-based youth is twenty-five percent reduction of current air. And then local, which is student activities we estimate a amount based on what we've gotten in the previous years. Uh, I asked for one.
Thank you. We're still subject to the two percent budget cap, right?
Yes.
Because of our chaining to November election and also not having to put the budget up as long as we stay under two, two percent or under.
Yes.
And so this reflects being two percent or under.
Yes, two percent. Yes, yes, correct.
Thank you.
Um, sorry. Mr. Thomas?
A couple of questions. The, could you explain to me the, the HVAC project? I know that's a project that's been on our budget every, for three years. What have already been completed? What schools have already been completed? And tell me what school is, this, this about to be completed.
Mr. Thomas, if I could answer that?
Sure.
Um, schools five and six have been budgeted. The high school has been budgeted. Dr. Kotik came back. We met with both architects. So we're dealing with two separate architect teams. Schools five and six, their, their bid went out today. So we're waiting for bidders to pick up and show interest in doing that work. The high school is back on track as well. We had a meeting with the architect. We had a little issue with fees. We came to a meeting of the mind and it's, you know, as we know, that, that one has a long history. And their fees are based on the size of the project. So if we, it went, it was at one point, we got out the bid, bids came in and just bids were twice as much as our whole budget. We thought it died. And we got federal money, we brought that in, the budget went up, we adjusted the fee, and then, you know, it's gone up again. So like I said, I will be discussing that with the operations committee. I believe that'll be prior to our next agenda, if it's there, their fees, and we'll move from there. In this budget, we're anticipating that fourteen million to do the middle school. And I was going to, while I'm raising my hand, is that it's, it's partial. We had already replaced some of the units at the middle school because they were, the pipes were bursting, they flood, and the floors within start buckling. If they were asbestos, we'd have to have it defeated. So we took those, and I believe they were Marv air units. We took them out and we replaced them. The ones that we're looking at now are the ones that are original to the building. So that project, we have the funding for, and we'd like to get that moving as well. Ms. Chico and I do what we do. We, you know, we sock away the money. Find out what's the, the priority it needs. I think the schools with second stories would be unbearable in the summer. So we have the funding for five, six, and the high school. Unfortunately, between COVID and architects and the work, we're trying to get these forces out to gate. So it appears as though we will be in a situation where three projects could be gone and they're designing the fourth. Yeah, so that one, that, that sounds good, but like, live through it. That's all I'm saying.
I, I, I let this all spread out a heck of a fine, and it's good to see us at this point, we can say we're servicing three to four buildings without bringing these PNC units to the, to the upper fifteen million dollars worth of capital approval. And I just want to thank you, you and Ms. Chico for the pioneering this, this project. It's, it's been there since I've been here, isn't it? I'd get to see it, see it happen.
Thanks. So just going back to the middle school project, that's just the existing. So it's not actually air commissioning the middle school in its entirety, just what's already in place?
This, the ones that we replaced earlier had AC. So we replaced them with AC.
Okay.
The originals did not. So that's what we're getting ready to tackle. And they will be replaced with air commissioning. And, and the whole gist of it is for clean air. Clean air. But if you throw a couple dollars more and you get the hit switch and they get AC, you know, so we're all like, AC, you know, clean air.
Take the clean air with the season we have. And one other question I had, and again, I'm not a numbers person. So looking at the tuition for twenty-four, twenty-five revised, I see it at one point eight million. And proposed for twenty-five, twenty-six, it's up to three point one million. There was a big jump. I was just wondering what that was.
So in the prior year, we had a large, a prior year tuition adjustment, you check them. So I believe that their tuition alone would have been about two point seven billion. But at the end of the year, we go back and we say, how much did we charge you both? We charged you too much and for too many. We had to give them back eight hundred thousand dollars. So their decision was, we can either, we had one year to make that payment. Their decision was offset it with our tuition. So that's why that number is artificially low.
And last question, promise. With the dismantling of the Department of Education, does that have any ramifications on our school budget?
Well, if you, Gina, you wanted to?
I would be only from what I heard from you.
Really, so at, at this point, historically, we were able to budget eighty-five percent of our prior year projects or awards that they gave us, the title on twenty-three IDEA basic, which is for our special ed duty, some of the most vulnerable and injured. So this year, when we were budgeting, we were told to budget seventy-five percent. I do not have those numbers yet. And I hope we don't see something like we did with semi. Did you see that it was a two ninety-nine down to forty-six?
Forty-six.
Right now, we just don't know. So I'm waiting to, to get those numbers. We're going to proceed with exactly what we've been told. If by chance they do reduce it significantly, some of that stuff may have to get moved into the general fund. Some, some programs you have to have. Or let's say, I doubt, I really doubt they're going to do anything with IDEA. But if they do, those tuition costs come back into the general fund. And I know as many as there are. So right now, we're in a holding pattern. I've lost too much sleep. And just, to be like, be like they said.
And, and just to add, I do try to keep up on the, the news. And it does say that they do think that even though they're dismantling the Department of it, it might just be the, the federal workers and not necessarily the funding. But like I said, every day it's different. You see, you hear something and the next day it's different. So we really don't know. And we don't know if it's because of the way the federal government is on a different fiscal year. We don't know what year they're actually going to affect. It could be, like you said, we just don't know. It's a holding pattern.
Although I do recall having to schedule a special meeting in July, although we only currently have one. And because they took our aid back, do you remember that?
Yep. Any other questions? Thank you very much. And remember, turn back the advertised budget. You can keep the presentation, it's just the advertised.
And those are only provided to the, the board members. So when Ms. Chico was talking about the letters and she was showing, we wanted to give you enough detail.
Appreciate it.
And what you need to do to look at it is compare so that there's no wild swings down there. So we try to keep it consistent. So if you saw a wild swing, you might want to add it.
This is what we want back.
Yes. And we do forensic, Mr. Davis.
Yes, ma'am. You got to, you were under a lot of stress, okay? I'm offering you one of those cream cheese pound cakes again.
Ms. Peterson has one more question.
When will New Jersey numbers actually come in? Is that in April?
Um, the state?
Federal and state will be in. Federal isn't in, but you had a state next.
Yes.
Definitely, they're not going to go back and cut it.
Well, oh, no. We never know.
We don't, that's what I'm asking. So I just wanted, it's what they promised us right now.
Yes.
But it could change as things move forward. So I wanted to make sure everyone on the board and in this room knew that New Jersey can go back. Because we had a couple of years that they did.
Yeah, I think there was two years in a row. And it was about in like sixteen, seventeen, fifteen, sixteen, sixteen, seventeen, around there where they took one, you know, they took a small amount from us and then they took a big amount from us. But, yeah.
Thank you.
And they deferred their last two state aid payments till July.
Thanks.
Mrs. Boyle?
Yes, sir.
Would you also explain to the board that this is a tentative budget? And we are on a tight timeline, which means that, you know, we have to get this tentative budget approved in Central County. And once it's approved by the county, then we'll be able to do a budget presentation to the entire community. And so we pretty much want to get a vote on this. It's all, it's all we did for its approval. Did you know who this school was?
I did.
Did you know who I do?
Uh, I did five. We had thirteen. Yeah, she has the best to do. And I had mine.
What this? Almost got away with it.
There's one more here.
I think, this is being missing. Thank you. But I'm sure they won't be putting them on Facebook. No. Thank you.
Double check, Ms. Martin.
I turned mine in.
That concludes our presentations for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Putti. Thank you, Ms. Chico and Ms. Boyle as well. Moving on to correspondence, do you have any correspondence tonight?
No correspondence this evening, Mr. President. However, I did want to say that on the addendum, all of the budget questions are there. So we'll get to hold on the budget. And this is just to send it up to the county office so they can start their process.
Thank you. Can I have, moving on to the minutes, can I have a motion to approve the following meeting minutes from our regular meeting, the regular Board of Education meeting from February twenty-six, twenty-twenty-five, open session and regular meeting for February twenty-six, closed session.
Peterson move for approval of the regular meeting, February twenty-six, twenty-twenty-five, open and closed session.
Second, Ms. Martin.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Clark?
Abstain.
Ms. Claude?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Motion has carried.
Moving on to board committee reports. Mr. Thomas, do we have a athletic committee report?
No report at this time, but I do say our, our spring sports are gearing up to take the field and bring home some more championships.
There we go. Ms. Martin, do we have anything from the citizens? Do we have anything for the Citizens Advisory Committee?
No, we do not.
I do have the report, I apologize, I just did not email it to you, but I can read that out if.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Sorry, sorry. Did you get it? But I will make sure that I email that to you, Ms. Martin, so you can disseminate that to the board.
Thank you.
So my apologies. The Citizens Advisory Committee met March sixth, twenty-twenty-five, on the tele Thursday, beginning at six thirty-five PM. In attendance were Rosie Hoffman, Jerry Lemola, myself, Marcy Tommasello, Luisita Vega, and Greg Wade, board liaisons Rita Martin, Wanda Glover, president. Absent were Robert Chester, Ms. Ortiz, Babe Crooks, Linda Harriman, Mike Hogan, Jennifer Moss, Diane McKenzie, and Christopher Zoid. At the meeting, I gave an update on the board's responses to our last recommendations. So I thank the board for taking those under consideration and currently looking at those. We discussed how Ms. Claude's motion, which was adopted by the BOE to look into purchasing a Chromebook for students in grade seven, who's all for the next school year, was discussed. We also had discussions on school security, teacher team building, teacher retention, and high school JROTC program. The following recommendations are being made to the Board of Education as a result of these discussions. I did forget to add that we are still working ongoing on the HSA handbook. So that way, there's a uniform kind of handbook for each of the school's HSAs to follow as well. So I have the three recommendations from the CAC. Number one kind of falls under school security. The CAC is recommending that students who record while in school, this is again, separate from the cell phone policy, I want to make that very clear, that any recording done on school premises becomes a student misconduct issue under incitement, whether it's the recording of a fight, but just a separate student misconduct issue. I know we've had previous issues where fights were being recorded, uploaded onto social media, that sort of thing. And under our current cell phone policy, I think it's more geared towards, you know, if a student is taking their phone out to scroll social media, cheating on a test, that sort of thing. I think when we get to the level of recording a fight, you know, teachers in the classroom or even other students, that's a different level. And I think it's above and beyond the scope of what the policy covers. And even to kind of play a little bit of devil's advocate, you know, we do have it so that, you know, as a parent, I know I have to sign that the school's able to record and use photographs of my children, correct? So if there's another student recording my child in school, I'm, I'm gonna have a problem with it. So I would ask that the board, or the CAC would ask that the board take that under advisement as well. The second recommendation falls under teacher team building. It was brought to the CAC, perhaps that teachers on their own time, with their own funding, want to kind of get together to have team building exercises. You know, they would fund it, they would organize it, there would be no, you know, anything on the, on the district, except being able to utilize school buses for there. So, you know, example, Friday night of the Dave and Buster's, per se, it's outside of school hours, you know, outside of their general duties, just having access to school buses. And I think that would go a long way and teach them a route, for sure. And then the third recommendation was to look into reinstating the JROTC program at the high school. Ideas for the next meeting to include security and public relations. The meeting was adjourned at seven fifty PM. And I want to thank Rosie Hoffman for being our substitute recorder at that meeting. And if the board has any questions, I'm happy to entertain those right now.
Mrs. Deavis, I don't have any questions, but I could possibly respond to a couple of those. Recording the fights, that is something we are going to revisit as a part of our student code of conduct. Teachers using school buses for after hour weekend type of functions, they would just pretty much have to follow the same use of facilities, like everyone else does, any other organization. So long as it's not during school time, would be my concern, but other than that, we could. The ROTC program, for those of you who have been around, it's not necessarily the choice of the school district to have a JROTC program. The Department of Defense normally provides fifty percent of the salary. But one of the issues that we had was the number of students who participate in ROTC program. You must have at least ten percent of the student population. So for example, we have fifteen hundred students, we should have a hundred and fifty students in the JROTC program. We have not been close to those numbers up until, I would say, the last five, close to eight years. We've never come close to those numbers. Because of those, the shortage of numbers, we were placed on probation for many years. Our program was not appealing to those officers who may be looking for ROTC program because it wasn't stable. And because it was on probation, they would tend to look somewhere else because they didn't want to come for just one year. They want to have a number of years. So at this point, and the lack of interest. I think at the last year we had ROTC, we may have had ten kids. So with the lack of interest, being on a probationary status for a number of years, the Department of Defense decided that they were no longer funded fifty percent. There was no interest coming from the Department of Education. So at this point, I just want to let the board and the community know that there's no chance in us getting the ROTC program at this point. So, and I didn't want to mislead anyone to think, well, that's a possibility. There's no possibility for that to happen.
No, it makes total sense. I just want to go back to where the teachers being able to utilize the school buses. So as the policy currently sits, I do believe that any community group who wants to use the school buses are in charge of the insurance rider, correct?
Absolutely.
So is that something that we can consider comping for the teachers as an impact dependent wealth?
Well, I, my initial thought would be no, because it's a liability attached to all of the use of facilities, use of our buses. And if the board make that possible, then therefore the board accepts all liability in the event there's an accident. The other thing is, people love to sue us. And they will not be exempt from that. So in doing so, I want the board to know that not only would they be accepting the liability, they would be accepting everything that goes with that. So before I would say just move on, I think we need to take a real close look at that and make sure, because everyone else is expected to have a certificate of insurance. That would be my only concern, the liability that's attached to it.
Any other questions before I sit down? Thank you.
Moving on to, moving on to the education committee, Ms. Martin?
I'm sorry. We have no report. We have a meeting the fourth Tuesday of this month.
Okay. Mr. McManus, the marketing committee?
I do have a report, Mr. President. We had a chance to meet, the marketing committee convened at March eighth, twenty-twenty-five at four PM. Attendance were one, Mr. John Shaw, Wanda Claude, Joe Winslow, Joe Thomas, and truly Jared McManus. Discussion of the committee centered around the topic of the development of the social media club, which was, we talked about that before in session. I have my notes attached. Purpose, social media club affectionately referred to as the Breakfast Club. Purpose is to drive district engagement by communicating upcoming events, district successes, as well as other newsworthy items throughout the entire community, as well as staff, parents, and students. Composition, inspired somewhat from the movie from the nineteen eighties, The Breakfast Club. The goal is to assemble a group of students. And this, we at our school definitely do a good job promoting diversity. But it would be a student from each the middle school and the high school that represent a cross section of the student body. Suggested, one athlete, one performing art, one advanced placement class student, and one successful, I clicked the term down as at risk, I wasn't really sure, but kids who have excelled in personal behavior. The source of these students and students to use can and should come from the students themselves. Recommendations can be submitted to a single point of contact with that individual to screen the willingness of the students to participate. This secondary goal is kids in this club. Secondary goal, kids in this club would be able to learn, draft, edit, and produce quality short and medium term videos for consumption. These videos would then be distributed through the existing technological infrastructure that we have. Supervision, we currently have a person on retainer for tech purposes. And I'm, forgive me if I'm not referring to that correctly. This individual will be able to supervise and the entire production process and would include the development of ideas for content and content storage. This content would become a library. In a lot of these cases, it can be used, reused during the year. For example, reusable content. Coming out of the winter, we had the dreaded one hour late, two hours late, things of that nature. So that would be stuff that we could text out to the district with a face of the children. Some of the kids that were on that, schools canceled, time changes, for example, spring ahead and fall back, and/or holiday announcements, examples of one-time content. The higher and retirement notice of teachers or administrators, sports events announcements, scholarship announcements, both sports and academic, and other clubs. For example, STEM, STEM, performing arts, et cetera. And then the, again, the dreaded school board meetings, which would be great to see more community involved. Again, the distribution of this content would be easily facilitated through the existing text messaging system. Advancing, the advantage to using video versus text only is an increased open rate. There's been a number of studies that are done on that, I can actually provide that, if that's what you're interested. But it would definitely be able to increase community engagement. So that's, that's the proposal. And then, so we adjourned, we adjourned the meeting approximately five twelve PM. And the next meeting, ten and will be March nineteenth, seven PM at the McManus Castle. With sweets provided, of course.
Thank you, Mr. McManus.
Yes, sir.
Well, Mr. Anderson's not here. Ms. Boyle, anything from the operations committee?
No, we have not met. We will meet the Tuesday before the last board meeting of the month. The twenty fifth.
Mr. Peterson, I'm gonna ask you for the policy committee.
Sure, the policy committee did meet this evening, right prior to the meeting at six o'clock. In attendance was Ms. Claude, Mr. Clark, and Ms. Peterson. We will have first reading policies to visit at the March twenty-sixth.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas, the economic and development and municipal drug.
Nothing at this time, since the last February third meeting. Our next meeting, I believe, is in April, April fifteenth.
Okay. And there's, there hasn't been a planning board meeting since our last board meeting, so there's nothing to report on that. We'll move on to the superintendent's report, starting on page three to the bottom of page five. Can I get a motion to approve the superintendent's report as it's been recommended for approval?
Peterson move for approval of the superintendent's report, recommended approval of the following items, A and B, found on page three through five.
Can I get a second?
Second, Ms. Martin.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. DeClark?
Yes.
Ms. Gallois?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
The motion has carried.
Moving on to the business administrator, board secretary's report, starting on the top of page six to the bottom of page ten. Can I get a motion to approve that business administrator, board secretary's report as it, as it, as it, as it's recommended for approval?
Peterson move for approval of the board administrative, business administrative board secretary's report as recommended for approval of the items found on A and B, page six through ten.
Second, Ms. Martin.
Any questions?
Yes, I do. I have a question for page seven. Use of facilities, number nine, you have school, school five, Tall Pines, and high school Winslow Elite Track. Could someone tell me in, in our stakeholders, what's that about?
Sure. At school five, the Tall Pines Camp, that's a local organization that provides summer camp for many young people in our, in our school district or our community. And their pickup is in the parking lot of school five. Every morning, they pick the young people up, the parents bring them to that location, then they drop them off at that same location. They've been using that as a pickup and drop off for quite some time. As far as the Winslow Elite Track and Field, those are the little ones in our community. As you know, Coach Brown has been coaching in Winslow Elite Track and Field program long before she became the coach at Winslow Township High School. So these are our little people who use the facility after hours, maybe after we use it. And they also have been using that facility for a number of years.
Thank you, sir.
Any, any other questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Gallois?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Mr. Shaw?
Yes, but I have to abstain. Yes, but I have to abstain on page six, letter B on the vendor bills list for P O number six, three, eight, zero.
Uh, motion has carried.
Moving on to the personnel report, um, from, starting on the top of page eleven, moving all the way through to the bottom of page fourteen. Can I get a motion to approve that personnel report as the superintendent recommends for approval?
Peterson moved for approval of the personnel report as recommended by our superintendent, number A, one through ten, found on page eleven through fourteen.
Second, Ms. Martin.
Any questions? Doctor Fritti, can I just ask one question?
Sure.
Um, for number eight on page seven.
Okay.
Can you just explain that real quick?
Yes, um, the board approved that tutoring program. Um, I, I, yes, the, the, the board approved this program in March. I'm sorry.
It was approved at the last one.
Right.
Where are we at?
Page fourteen.
Page fourteen, right. The board approved the tutoring program. These are the teachers who will be teaching in that, in that program.
It's on here again because it was a change account number. Now, you see the asterisk, the wrong account number was listed last time.
I just wanted to make sure.
Did you want to add something, Doc?
Yeah, the board approved two different tutoring services. And one of those varsity tutoring, that was the online tutoring.
Okay.
These teachers are regular teachers that are teaching during the day, and they are the ones who have decided to utilize their prep period or their lunch to provide tutoring services.
And I'd just like to make a comment about that because I know there was some talk in the community about tutoring ser- tutoring service. Is there's any way we could send out an extra, maybe a robocall, let parents know that these tutoring services are available? So our stakeholders and our communities can know for sure that these are some of the things that we're doing to bridge the gap.
So Mister Thomas, I can tell you that, um, the principals have communicated with the parents regarding the tutoring services, and we did announce it here. So, um, I'm sure that the principals can do it. However, there's a problem of doing that. Um, when we do that, then it makes, um, I think there's perception that it's open to everyone. And we can't do that because we're limited based on the funding and the number of students we can service.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions? Roll call, please.
Mister Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Gallois?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mister McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mister Thomas?
Yes.
And Mister Shaw?
Yes.
Motion has carried.
Moving on to our addendum. Everybody take a couple of seconds to, uh, read over their addendum before we start moving on to that. If everybody's looked over their addendum, if I can have a motion on the superintendent's report as the superintendent, superintendent recommends it for approval, um, on page one, and I have a motion.
Peterson moved for approval of the superintendent's report as recommended for action. One, A through one through six, found on page one.
Can I have a second?
Second, Ms. Martin.
Any questions?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Um, the number three on page one, the summer music program. Can someone explain that to me?
Sure. The summer music program is going again, has been a program in place in the district over ten years. And these are the young people in our orchestra band. Um, we realize, of course, that many of our parents cannot afford, uh, individual practice or lessons for our children. So we, as a school district, we provide that opportunity for our young people to come in and continue with their music lessons during the course of summer. So when they return, sort of never miss a beat. And as you all know, we have one of the best upper elementary, uh, bands and orchestras anywhere in the state. These young people do a tremendous job. So it's just a matter of providing them with that opportunity to have those lessons during the summer months.
And is it a cost to the, to the?
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Doctor Fritti?
Yes, ma'am.
They asked, and we're changing the location because of the projects that are taking place in five minutes.
Right.
And that's why it's at the middle school this year.
Right. Okay. Thank you, Doc.
Doctor Fritti?
Yes, sir.
The drink from the Rookin Foundation. Um, can you explain that one?
Yes. Um, this is an opportunity for, um, the foundation to come into the middle school at no cost to us and set up a STEM program, pretty much wanting to intertwine what we already have in place. Um, so, uh, they reached out to us and we had, uh, pretty much stated that, yes, we are interested. So the foundation is going to come in, they're going to set up everything, and our young people will benefit from it.
Very, very, very good. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Mister Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Claude?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mister McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mister Thomas?
Yes.
And Mister Shaw?
Yes.
Motion has carried.
Moving on to the board secretary's report, uh, part of our addendum. Can I get a motion to approve the board secretary's, uh, report as it's recommended for approval?
Peterson moved for approval of the board adminis- uh, business administrative board secretary's report as indicated. A, one through eight, found on page two and three.
Second, Ms. Martin.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mister Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Claude?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mister McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mister Thomas?
Yes.
And Mister Shaw?
Yes.
Motion has carried.
Moving on to the proposed district budget, um, as a part of the business administrator, board secretary, um, recommendation for approval. Can I get a motion to approve the tenant, the proposed school budget?
Peterson moved for approval, uh, the business administrative board secretary's approval of the proposed school district tentative budget for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six, uh, year. Item one through five, page, found on page four and five.
Second, Ms. Martin.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mister Clark?
No.
Ms. Gallois?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mister McManus?
No.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mister Thomas?
Yes.
And Mister Shaw?
Yes.
Motion has carried. Any comments, Mister Long?
Do I have any comments?
No, I'm just making sure I have the, uh, significant.
Yeah, we got. What was the final number? You're, you're there. You have many, how many affirmative votes did you have?
One, two, three, four, five.
You just, yeah, you're good. And you're just basically sending it, this is authorization to send it to the cutting suit. That's all you're doing, right?
Moving on to the personnel report on the back of our addendum on page six. Can I get a motion for approval of the su- the personnel report as the superintendent recommends it for approval?
Peterson moved for approval of the personnel report as recommended by our superintendent, number A, one, two, and three, found on page six.
Second, Ms. Martin.
Any questions?
One, this is a little bit of, Mister President, I was, uh, surprised to see, uh, Doctor Quarkamo on the list of, of retiring. I just want to congratulate her for a long illustrious career, and thank you very much for being a part of the Winslow Township for a great many years.
Thank you very much, Mister McManus. My retirement home in Maryland is ready and waiting.
Congratulations, Doctor Quarkamo.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mister Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Claude?
Yes.
Mister Mc, oh, excuse me, Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mister McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mister Thomas?
Yes.
And Mister Shaw?
Yes.
Motion has carried.
Moving on to the Open Public Records Act requests. Ms. Boyle, do we have any this meeting?
No. No, Mister Pre- uh, President, we did not.
Um, Doctor Fritti, do we have any information on that?
Yes. Uh, the information items that I have, as easy as President, members of the board, and the community are pretty much follow-ups to a lot of the information that I was directed or approved to proceed at our last board meeting. First, um, I'd asked that, uh, we had the opportunity to pursue, um, the district to become a choice district. And, uh, we reached out to the state, and unfortunately, that request is placed on hold, if not basically saying to us, it will not be able to happen. Let me just read briefly to what they had stated. The department is required to manage choice student enrollment based on the funding approved by the New Jersey Legislature in the Annual Appropriations Act. The fiscal year twenty six choice funding in the governor's budget does not allow for choice enrollment growth. Therefore, the department must limit the number of available choice seats in a consistent, fair, and transparent manner by not increasing, with some exceptions, the number of choice seats in participating choice districts and prohibiting new school districts from joining the choice program. Basically, what they're saying is, um, the funding is a consideration. Those choice programs that are presently existing, uh, that will not be able to extend or increase their enrollment. And those programs that are requesting applications to become a choice good district is pretty much on hold. The letter goes on to state, if these chances and new choice district applications will be accepted, information will be posted on the choice website no later than March twenty twenty six. Well, we're already in March twenty twenty six. So I'm gonna hold out until the end of the month to see if there's a change. If there is no change, basically, again, what they're saying is, uh, choice student enrollment for newly approved choice districts would occur in the twenty seven, twenty eight school year. Talk about at least three years. So at this point, um, um, the chance of it occurring for us to become a choice district is very slim. And then, on the other hand, if it does occur, we're looking at at least three years for our application to be submitted. So at this point, um, becoming a choice district is all, all right? Um, one of the other, uh, requests that was made was to give me the opportunity and permission to pursue a technology audit. Um, we are gathering information, uh, with the idea that the district want a thorough and detailed audit. And with the information we've gathered so far, we've also been trying to get cost estimates based on what I'm understanding and hearing from the members of the board. We're looking at anywhere between one hundred and fifty thousand to two hundred thousand. Now, it could be less, it could be more, but I don't think it will exceed two hundred and fifty thousand. Let me just give you some of the things that have to be considered. We have, um, eight schools, and then all of the other buildings in the district, including administration building, uh, at Barnes, um, the early childhood center, which is included, the bus garage, the maintenance building, the food service modular, all those buildings have to be considered. So we're looking at thirteen different locations. Um, and again, based on the information I've gathered from several sources, we're looking at around about that amount. And, um, I, I know I'm correct in stating that you want a thorough audit into our system. And at this point, that's where we are. Uh, I'll continue. We're looking into, uh, companies who provide that service. And hopefully, um, I, I would like to be able to say by the next meeting where we are, and I can put somebody out there for you to consider. But at this point, I'm still gathering the information. But that's where we are so far. Um, you also, we also talked about Chromebooks for students seventh, uh, through twelfth grades. Uh, we conducted a needs assessment in the past few days. And right now, what we have at the middle school, we're going to need at least five hundred and twenty six, um, Chromebooks. And at the high school, we're going to need nine hundred and twenty five. Of course, that would include some additional ones in the event we have to replace. Uh, we're looking at around about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, to replace and upgrade. But we're looking at replacement, uh, Chromebooks. And that's pretty much what we're looking at in terms of costs. Um, as far as the Chromebooks are concerned, uh, Mister President, we had this discussion several times. Um, that's pretty much where we are. But the board had to tell me whether or not it's something you want to move for it that we haven't budgeted for at this point, because that's, we're moving forward our present budget for twenty five, twenty six. We're finishing up where we are now, but that's not budgeted for. Plus, the audit, which is a one-time, cost, uh, but based on what I'm understanding, we need, a company would probably have to put a team of people in that district because of the volume of the work. Uh, so at this point, we're gonna try to bring some closure to that as soon as possible. But the board would have to approve in which direction you want me to go with that. All right. Last but not least, Mister President, the plaques for former board members are in the district. Uh, you have to set a date if you want to do the next board meeting, or whatever board meeting you'd like to schedule. Uh, but we do have the plaques. And, uh, if you set a date for us to honor those board members, we're prepared to provide you with that.
Okay.
That concludes my information items.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Um, Doctor Fritti?
Yes.
Uh, regarding the, uh, technology audit.
Yes.
A- as you have gone through there and you saw, and you're, you're right, it's a, a pretty big scope, especially the number of buildings.
Right.
It seems that the number of complaints that have come in about, uh, interconnectivity to the internet centered more around schools. Do you think it would be wise in an effort to, to save some money that maybe we can look at that particular problem in those particular buildings?
Just the schools itself?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we are all interconnected. So you're going to do the schools and not do the other buildings because the administration building, we are also connected with the schools, that sort of thing. Um, our, our transportation department, we have to do the transportation department if you go to others, because again, they are the organization or the department that go out there, get our children, bring them to school. When you do a school district, every component that keeps us operating, even the food service modular, that's what they have to make us run. So to miss one component, and then if they go down and we've done all the others. So my recommendation, while you're doing it, do it all. You know, just do it thorough.
In for a penny, in for a pound.
Pretty much. Because if not, then we have to come back and say, well, we missed this one. Now you have to do it over. So my recommendation, do it right the first time.
Thank you.
So we won't have to do it over.
So Doctor Fritti, are you looking for approval?
I'm not looking for any approvals today, uh, at this time. But I, I do want to caution the fact that none of this has been budgeted for. And I have to rely on Mrs. Boyle to tell me what we cannot do. Uh, and then you have to give me some timelines. For example, the Chromebooks, are you looking at September? Uh, the audit, I'm looking at immediate because that's something I figure is a priority. And, um, at this point, you know, give me some direction. But right now, speaking with Mrs. Boyle, she's saying we may be able to squeeze out the audit within our existing budget.
Okay.
But for us, the Chromebooks are concerned, we have not budgeted for that.
Okay. Yes.
The only other thing I wanted to add is, um, once we implement the Chromebook, that's not a one and done because next year, you know, they break, we have to replace them, and the grade comes in. Um, to me, that's like hiring staff. Once you implement that, you're going to have those costs going forward. I'm, I'm hesitant until we find out what our federal aid is coming. The federal aid comes in nice. Very good, you know? Yeah. Always give us direction. It's a federal aid.
If it's a federal aid, if they flop us, and there's programs that we have to absorb.
Right.
I, we need to do that first, and then, um, yeah, and then we can investigate going forward, so. Um, and like I said, a one and done, when you say 200,000, we do the audit. However, they're gonna find something, but we have to gear up to, I mean, knowing that. Yeah, it's like, you're not plugged in, I'm not plugged in, okay? And then I don't get the money together so I can go plug it in, or I ignore it. So I know what my problem is, but I have to be able to resolve that problem, so that's all.
Because we will assume that whatever company comes in, they're gonna make recommendations.
Oh, yeah.
Recommendations may come with the cost, of course. So if you want to upgrade this, or change this, and that's the purpose of the audit, to enhance what we have, or improve what we have, so that all the issues that we're hearing eventually are resolved.
Right.
All right? Now, Mrs. Boyle's pretty much saying, um, if we don't get the federal funding, then we have to decide, for example, if we don't get the federal funding for IDA.
Right.
That's a priority, those special education students. So if you're asking me, well, what are you gonna do? We're gonna absorb that federal money for these children as opposed to Chromebooks, which means we have to put that on the side. However, you still have a Chromebook cost, because, uh, like every three years, we try to upgrade, so we're always gonna have a, at least a minimal cost to keep them upgraded and updated. Uh, but we are always cautious when we're moving in a direction, particularly going budgeting. Right? So we go.
So do we want to come up with a timeline or a recommendation for Dr. Potte? Tonight, or do we?
Yeah, I don't need anything at this point. I don't have enough concrete information in front of me to ask you to tell anything at this point. Thank you.
Moving on to old business?
Yes, uh, Mr. President, I would like to, um, find out the status of the committee that was to review the two applications we had for renaming our track.
Mr. Thomas, do you know?
Yes, um, last year, somewhere around, I guess in November, we had two applications in renaming our, uh, track and field, uh, after two applicants it was proposed. We, we formed a committee, the committee was, at that time, was myself, Ms. Peterson, Ms. Pitts, and I, I believe it might have been someone else that we was gonna work with collaboration with the Township Committee and the mayor and her staff to see the fruition of doing it. I know one of the advocates' names was Dennis Mitchell, which was a gold medal winner. Um, he has three of the most prolific track runners, uh, women track runners to this point, and we just want to know what's the status of that, so we can come to a conclusion, but either way, whether we gonna move forward with it, or we're not gonna move forward. So we would like to get that back up on the table, because as things evolve and things go forward, we want to celebrate every chance we get for not just our students, but our staff, and anyone else that we feel is doing great things, not just in our community, but throughout this country.
Uh, if I'm, I need to, the other person, I think, was Mr. Bates?
Yeah.
Was that the other name?
Yes.
I know it was submitted by, so those were the two names that were submitted, and, um, the committee, whenever, um, make a recommendation to the board, and then the board can act on either one of those individuals. At this point, um, I'm not sure how much progress has been made on that.
So with your permission, Mr. President, I'd like to, if, if, if we can, if I can contact the committee that's in place to see what their recommendation is, and see where their status is, and possibly have some type of conclusion for you in the next month or so of, of how, of what their recommendation is, that way the board can vote on it either way, or what, what we're gonna do.
Yes, sir, Mr. Thomas.
Thank you.
I have a question in regards to that, um, because I wasn't on the board when that was brought up. I'd like to know, what was the criteria of the people who we want to name this track after? Because once you name it, it becomes permanent. And, um, part of, one of the things I didn't hear you say is that they were active in our community, um, and not, I, I give kudos to anyone and everyone who works in our community, but when we name something after someone in our track field, and you call their name, and no one knows who they are today, that's not good for me. So I want us to make sure that we really think seriously about, before we put a permanent name on our track of a person, yes, um, Dennis Mitchell, it was an icon, um, he did win a gold medal, and he do have three people that went to the Olympics, but none of them were from Winslow Township. And so I would like to see someone that we're gonna give that honor to here at our school, that they are actually here back to me, given to our school and given to our community, even if it's just a visit or a presence. So, um, when we think about this, I would like us to think hard, and making sure that if we go, if we move forward, we're moving forward for the right reasons, um, and not negating anyone from their accolades that they're well-deserved enough, but making sure that when we put a permanent fixture in our Winslow Township school, we're making sure where this, this a person that has, you can go to one of these children that are in our school right now, and call their name, and they know who they are. And right now, many of our kids don't know who these people are. So they need to be legends in our school, complete legends, and that's just my input, thank you.
Uh, Mr. President, there is a process in place, and there's a policy in place. Um, you have the recommendations, but you have to have community input. And you have to make it known so the people can come in to board meetings, excuse me, and may comment one way or the other about the recommendations. And then after you've given them several months of open public comment on that particular item, then the board as a whole, based on the recommendation coming from, uh, the committee, the recommendation from the committee comes first, public interest comes after that for about three, four, five months, I, I'm not sure, but I know several months. Then, after they've had an opportunity to, uh, have their opinions known, then the full board have to have that discussion, and then the full board must vote on whether or not one or the other will be the individual that will be honored for that. So there is a process already in place.
And that's the process I'm trying to resist.
Right.
Any other old business? Moving on to new business?
Yeah, I have something. Um, the VFW 300, um, Post 303, um, would like to announce that they're having a movie day in commemoration of Women's Day on March the 31st, and they're inviting everyone in the community who's off, um, and able to come at 1:00 P.M. on March 31st, um, to celebrate the last day of Women's Day month, uh, Women's Day, Women's Month. Is that right? Am I saying it correctly? Yes, to celebrate us women, the strong, powerful women of the world, and Hidden Figures will be the movie that they will present in. They will be offering, um, light refreshments, um, to anyone who shows up, and it's free of charge.
Location?
At the VFW Post 303 on Sickler Road.
Any other new business?
Yes, uh, Mr. President, I just wanna, I, I know one is here, but as round, a sound, resounding thanks to the performance that our choir did at Rowan University, this is the second year, second year. And I will, I have the videotape on my desk that our, um, radio, TV, film department did, but they were fabulous under the direction of Mr. Dehaney. They would like to come and actually present our director with a plaque and do something for the students, because they were outstanding. So if they can stand up, she can stand up. Just outstanding, and this is, I mean, for our president of Rowan University said, where did they come from, and I was so proud to say, this is Winslow. Thank you once again for your performance for the second time.
Joe, you have something? Yes, I do have a comment. I just want to publicly thank, um, our leadership team. Um, through the years, we, we've endured a lot. Um, if it wasn't the hoodies, or the cell phones, or the culture climate survey, survey, you guys listened, you learned, and you adjusted. And I want to thank you publicly for that, because sometimes we, we, we tend to forget where we come from. We tend to forget who got us there, and if I forget, you can always nudge me. I'm a big component of celebrating and finding reasons to elaborate on somebody. So I just want to thank specifically you, Dr. Quarkamo, for your academic excellence in getting our curriculum together when you got here. I want to thank you, Mr. Davis, for your paralysis in trying to make sure that we're fully staffed and fully operational. I like to thank Mr. Tico and Ms. Boyle for putting on a budget every year that's comparable throughout the state with no problems, no, no frequent, uh, encumbrance. And I'd like to thank you, Dr. Mo Potte, for your leadership and steadfastness, for standing tall, even in times of turmoil. And I also like to give a kudos out to Ms. Pitts for her wavering support through over the years to make sure we get to this point here. We have a long ways to go, but I will never forget who got us here and how we got here.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Mr. President? I had a, uh, I put in a request to Mr. Davis, which he was kind enough to, um, get back to me with. Um, I just, I had one question about, there was, uh, the list of reasons that you gave me, were these each one? Or were they, like, there was, I'll say dream job was the top of the list, was, were there a number of people that put that as reason?
It was more than one.
But the, so, okay, so there's, yeah, there's nine things, so there could be more than one out of each of them?
Correct.
Okay, all right, if, it's okay, if I can touch base with you, uh, probably in the next day or two, just about that, thank you. Anybody else? I just want to say thank you again, Dr. Quarkamo, for all your years of service to the district and all the students that come through, walk through our halls, and, you know, for everything you've done for each and every one of them. So congratulations again on your retirement, may your home in Maryland be your utter enjoyment in your retirement.
I think that is well, and thank you very much, it's been a pleasure.
Thank you. Um, I know you're looking forward to reading public comments.
I am, I'm very excited about it. Public comments. The Winslow Township Board of Education highly values the input of citizens in making important decisions that affect the children of our community. We believe in the rights of citizens to observe board meetings, to ensure that all of our citizens have the opportunity to attend school board meetings and offer comment, and to ensure that the board can conduct the important business of the district. We ask that speakers follow the guidelines for making public comment. The board secretary will recognize those individuals in the audience who wish to make comment. We'd ask that you kindly respect the following procedures. One, all members of the public attending school board meetings must treat each other and the board with respect. Two, please state your full name and town of residence. Three, please limit your comments to four minutes, I'll be keeping time. Uh, fi, uh, four, please submit your questions in the event we're unable to answer them this evening to the Board of Education with your, uh, name, address, telephone number, and email address, if possible, where you can be contacted, and your questions will be answered within a reasonable timeframe. And lastly, individuals offering citizen comment are not permitted to make personal attacks on any district employee, board member, other testifier, or member of the public. Thank you, sir.
Excuse me, if I, if I may, just to interject before we go to that, I want to recognize Mr. Darius Peoples, a committee person for board too. We didn't, we didn't get a chance to recognize him. I just wanna, I want to make sure we recognize him, thanks for coming out.
I'm sorry, Mr. Peoples. Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Motion to open public comments?
Peterson move, uh, for approval to open public comments.
Second, Ms. Martin.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Debbie Murphy?
Good evening, um, I just wanted to give the board the update for the marching band, and then I have Peter update. Um, we competed at Cumberland on the first of March, and we both, both the WINS and the Guard placed first.
Wow.
The WINS had a score of 68.95, and the Guard had a score of 73.92. And we are taking two weeks off to work more on our show and get more done. And I have the times for our Barnegat show, oh wait, I forgot to say my name and my, sorry. I'll be sick of it. But the WINS are scheduled to go on at 4:00 P.M., and the Guard is scheduled to go at 6:45, and that is on 2/22 at Barnegat High School. And then for the musical, Momia is got, um, opening night is two weeks, um, from tomorrow. Um, I just wanted to give the community and the board members the dates. It is, opening night is Thursday, the 27th, at 7:00 P.M. There's gonna be a show on Friday, the 28th, at 7:00 P.M., and then closing night is Saturday, the 29th, at 7:00 P.M. It would be great to have some, a photograph.
That's March 3rd.
Yes, that's this one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. President, that's all that have signed up this evening. Do we have anybody on the phones?
Can I have a motion to adjourn public comments?
Peterson move for adjournment of public comments.
Second, Ms. Martin.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have an executive session tonight?
Uh, I don't believe we do, correct? Dr. Potte, Mr. Davis, Dr. Quarkamo, no, no executive session tonight, sir.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Peterson move for adjournment at this meeting.
Second, Ms. Martin.
All in favor?
Aye.